Township Board of Supervisors meeting. October fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Apologize for the late start. We are going to begin with these lutes of the flag, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Pollard?
Mr. Galloway? Mr. Brasky?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
Mr. Dent? Mr. Rockwell?
Here. The director should, Mr. Galloway was ill, unable to be here this evening. Mr. Dent got stuck at work, so he was unable to be here as well. Mr. Clark, we have a summary of our executive session we had before the meeting, please.
Yes, Mr. Harvey, during the executive session, the board discussed various personnel matters and various matters of litigation and potential litigation.
Okay, thank you. Going to begin with public comment. We have a couple of names on the list. Dick Trimble.
Good evening, gentlemen. I can't hear the mic.
Just tap that and see if it's working. I don't know if that's working or not. Just tap it, see if it's... Okay, all right. I hear it.
Yeah. I'm usually big... My... Pretty well. I know that there's been some changes in the code enforcement, and I know there's some new people coming in, and I'd like to have this board have them take a look at the letter of intent in related relationships to rental properties. There are certain items on here that they don't pertain to renting. I mean, every time we want to rent out a space, I have to bring in a site plan? I mean, I'm sorry, that's ridiculous, all right? There's other basic things on here, and if you want, I will put a letter into the manager saying, "This is what I have a real problem with." I think you need two letters of intent, one for sales, one for rentals, all right? Because I do know that, you know, somebody buys land, they're going to do land development, they have to submit the site plan.
Right.
I mean, this was my argument with Dylan when he started the thing. It was going to get out of hand. And one other item I want to address, I had a meeting with the professionals here about our favorite property, which goes unnamed, and I made a statement that what they were requiring, I said, is grandfathered into the zoning. The attorney in attendance for the township there stated that there is no such thing as grandfathering into the zoning. I contacted the state of Pennsylvania, and I have a letter from the state telling you that it is constitutionally protected if a previous zoning was there when you changed the zoning, for example. Because I said to this attorney, I says, "You know, what you're telling me is you're saying that the board of supervisors lie to the businesses along Pennsylvania Avenue." Remember when you rezoned out for riverfront properties?
Right.
Housing? And you told them that as long as they're in business there, that zoning would apply, the applicable. And when you tell me that there's no such thing as grandfathering, that made you guys liars, all right? And I know you weren't.
Right.
That attorney was wrong. So I do have a copy, and if you want, there again, I'll give it to the manager, and it was not Mr. Clark. I've never had a problem with him. We've argued, but we come out very congenial afterwards, but who do I argue with? But I do have a letter telling, stating that a previous use is constitutionally protected, all right?
Sure.
So that, those are two of the problems that I have, and I would appreciate if the board addressed it. If you want me to do...
I just want to ask a question real quick. Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir.
Does it have to stay that use? Wasn't there something where, if I'm understanding, like if it's not that use for up to a year, it would go back, they would go to the RD one?
Correct. Mr. Trimble is correct. Pre-existing non-conforming uses are protected, and if you change its zoning on a property, and we've, we make an area residential, but I've always been running my plumbing business out of that area, I can continue to run my plumbing business. If I stop running it as a plumbing business, if I'm not actively marketing it, if I'm not doing anything for over a year, you lose to pre-existing non-conformity. If you then attempt to expand the non-conformity to a more intensive use, it's not going to be my plumbing business, it's now going to be my bar and restaurant, then we can deny that and say that you have, now you've got to fall under the residential. But essentially, what Mr. Trimble is saying is correct. Pre-existing non-conforming uses are protected.
And one other thing, I want to dispute one thing you said, Mr. Clark. My understanding in talking to the state, that pre-existing use goes beyond one year until another use is put into that property.
No, what I'm saying is, what the law says is, if you stop using it for the pre-existing non-conforming use, and you're not using it for a year or more, and you are not actively marketing the property, if it's just sitting there vacant, the pre-existing non-conforming use can go away. If you're marketing it, if I'm trying to sell my plumbing business to another plumber for a year, or two years, or three years, the non-conformity stays.
Right, but my understanding from the state, and I'll reread this, was that, I know that used to be the rule. When I was on the board, on the three hundred and sixty-sixth day of that zoning not being used, we lost that zoning. They changed that to read that until that use is changed, it can still be used. I understand about the marketing and all that stuff, but I'm just, I'm just saying, I want to be clear on that. Because I had the one issue where, oh, when we did the rezoning of the property, it was because they said we couldn't put an office in a building out front because there was no office there, when in fact, PA security had an office on the site and had it for a long time, all right?
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You too, thanks.
And if you want me to do anything...
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, certainly if you have suggestions regarding, you know, the letters of intent, makes sense. The only, I mean, it does certainly make sense about a rental. The only concern would be if you're renting a space, if you're renting a building, have you made any modifications inside the building from the last time you rented it?
Well, that would...
And that would be different, right?
They're asking for that as well.
Right.
My problem was just, my major problem was the site plan.
Right.
But there are also some questions on here that the person renting wouldn't know, and ninety percent of the time, the...
Right.
The realtor doesn't know either. You'd be amazed.
Sure. All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Joan Graves?
Hi, good evening. I just have a quick question. No statement this time. I just have a quick question about Elcon, and have you heard any feedback from the DEP with respect to any, anything that, any questions that were presented at the meeting, or anything such as that?
No, we're not aware of anything. We basically find things out around the same time they hit the media, because they do a release, they let us know, and they let the press know, and so...
I thought sometimes the government entities, you know, keep in touch with one another, be it local or state, and sometimes they, you know, you hear something prior to us hearing it, or being rolled out to the media.
They're well aware of our concerns, all the concerns I read, for example, at the end of that April thirtieth meeting, when I went through all the things, and we communicated all of that to them. This is from a statement from this board regarding our opposition, in addition to things we found...
Right, yeah.
In terms of our land development ordinance that they were, you know, couldn't comply with.
How long does it typically take for them to, to make a decision and to go through the process? Because I remember when we were, we were working with the wheel operator facility, you know, many years ago, they kept going back and forth, and then they shelved it, and they said they, you know, that it wasn't going to be built, and then all of a sudden it came back again. So, do you anticipate this happening in this case? Do you, have you gotten any inkling of where they're, they're coming from, or...
Now, there hasn't been any issue, I know they were given, was it stormwater management? I think they were, they were given it back and told they had to make some corrections to. There hasn't been anything about the air permit, which of course, I would argue would be the big piece.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So there hasn't been anything regarding that?
Okay, and I think that's the biggest concern, especially due to the fact that they said they couldn't make any determination, you know, based on the fact that they had no facility built. But, you know, they have one overseas, and they really should have been able to give us some feedback with respect to the air quality and the impact, you know, especially with the other facilities and, you know, being in that complex there, and, you know, the problems with air quality. Okay, that's all I needed to know. Thanks, bud.
Sure. Tony Batiste?
Good evening, Tony Batiste, Fairliss Hills. To whom in the township does a person or organization address a problem that's been created by replacing storm sewers?
Replacing storm, did, was the township replacing the storm sewers? Was it a private company replacing the storm sewers?
I believe it was the township.
Okay, so it would have been part of the road program at some point?
Yes, on Yardley Avenue.
On Yardley Avenue?
Yardley Avenue in Fallsington.
Well, we've dealt with some of the issues there for, well, quite a few issues, the things we've dealt with. But Mr. Jones, a township engineer, is typically the one that would receive those kinds of concerns, and he would go out and investigate and take a look, and then get back to us about ideas and hopefully proposals for fixing things.
Fallsington's kind of a work in progress. We're going to go back out and take a look at a number of different situations out here where we've had complaints.
Okay.
So if you could just let us know where you're, what you're talking about.
Trustee for the Fallsington United Methodist Church. Okay. This is just for my information. When two attorneys are present at a township meeting, are we paying for both attorneys?
No.
Or is this a two-in-one job?
No.
Okay, thank you.
We've never paid for two.
And back on Elcon, and I know they threatened a lawsuit against the township, is there anything going on with that?
Well, they are suing us. I don't know, where are we in that stage?
They've appealed the determination by the board from earlier this year, and it's in Bucks County Court of Common Police. They filed their appeal. We filed preliminary objections to that, and we're waiting for a ruling on the preliminary objections.
So they've appealed our decision to Doylestown, and we basically answered their appeal with sort of, you know, they're saying, obviously, we're wrong, we're saying, no, we're not, and, you know, so a judge is going to have to decide.
And do we have any timeframe for that?
Have we, we haven't given any kind of a...
We don't, we don't have a briefing schedule yet, because we're dealing with the preliminary objections, which is more of an initial stage. But once the preliminary objections are decided, then we'll probably get a briefing schedule and have a better idea of when briefs need to be submitted, when oral argument will take place, and then we'll have a, be able to know when, anticipate when we'll have a decision.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure, thank you. All right, those are all the names on the list. Anybody else wish to speak? No hands? Okay, I'm number two. Is MLH one fifty Roebling Road LLC, preliminary and final land development. This is for phase two. Mr. Gray?
Yes, the applicant's proposed project consists of the construction of a forty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-eight square foot addition to the existing buildings to be used as a growing and processing facility of medical marijuana, along with the associated stormwater management utilities and parking facilities. Representing the applicant tonight is Mr. Andrew Stoll and Bob Showalter.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andrew Stoll. I represent the applicant. This project has been before you and before the township on many different occasions, most recently in the summer. We were here before the planning commission, and the planning commission voted in favor of the project. Just to add a little more color, there was two different phases, two different submissions. Phase one, related to connecting two existing buildings on the property, a one fifty solar drive, that's been taken care of. Since, since phase one, we've obtained title to the property, received approvals from the state to operate the grow processing facility, and submitted to the township for building permits. Now we're on phase two, which is a completely different submission, and as our township manager summarized as the gist of our project, I am here with my client, David Clapper, and with Mr. Bob Showalter, our engineer, to answer any questions, and, you know, that being said, unless there's any questions, we'd ask for final approval and the waivers as are stated in the draft resolution.
Okay. All right, so we have some documentation from some of the township professionals, as well as the fire marshal. Comments or questions for Mr. Stoll, Mr. Showalter, or...
Mr. Clapper.
Yeah, well, I was going to say, I'm Mr. Clapper, but any of our staff here? Mr. Brasky?
Nothing.
Mr. Rockwell?
No, nope.
Okay. Obviously, we've had quite a few submissions over the course of the past couple of years as we've been sort of adjusting the plans, and I do remember sitting in a meeting at some point with Mr. Clapper, and I don't remember if Mr. Showalter was there or not, and some other people, as they're looking, I think this was the original sort of big plan, which is going to have two different facilities, and it was very much like, you know, flying in an airplane and looking out on the wings, and people are still building the, building the wings as you're flying. And that really was the case, I think, with, with some of the law that changed regarding medical marijuana. From the state level, there seemed to be a lot of gray area that the state hadn't filled in yet, and for the people that were trying to sort of do this kind of work, they didn't really, you know, and even our people couldn't really answer a lot of the questions, just because, you know, it's, again, you're in an airplane, you know, flying along, and people are out in the wings still building it while you're in the air. And so at this point now, what you're looking to do really are the greenhouses, which was the big piece of this, obviously. And I know there's a partnership with, I think, a university, I think, basis for research, is that correct?
Right.
Mr. Clapper, you comment on that? Make sure to elevate that microphone a little bit, just so we get you.
Absolutely. Is that good? Yeah, so at this point, too, that was a good summary in terms of flying the airplane and looking out as we're building the wings. So originally, we were in, we were still trying to get approval from the, from the state, but we needed to have full plans to show them we were able to operate. So as Mr. Stoll mentioned, we've now been fully approved by the state, along with the partnership with Jefferson University Health System. So we are actually, we were approved to, to open our first dispensary, which will open in late November, early December, and they'll begin the research on, on the products, and we're now filling in the backend of being able to build out our grow process facility. So, yeah, we're excited. It's, it's going really well with Jefferson and the partnership. And in terms of the phase one, I believe we're going to pick up our building permit probably in the next day or two. I think we're just finalizing a few things, so we're, we're absolutely ready to get started on that phase, which will, will be, I think, when we come in, we had mentioned to you guys that it was going to allow us to meet the six-month requirement for the state to get up and operating as quickly as possible. As you said, Mr. Harvey, our real plan had been to build this greenhouse, which is the exciting part for us, and then to be able to continue to expand as, as the business is, is necessary, and we hope that that happens, and we come back in front of you for a phase three at some point, so that's where we're at.
Okay, and the dispense, where is your dispensary?
Our first one, we're allowed to have six throughout the state, so our first one is a block from Jefferson's campus on the corner of Ninth and Locust in Philadelphia, which was supposed to be and is going to be our flagship, where Jefferson has educational space to educate patients and to do the research projects that, or sign patients up to be part of the research projects.
Okay, okay. Yeah, now, because I know we've had some people asking questions about dispensaries here in Falls Township. The six you're looking to build would not be here to be...
Correct, correct. The way the state has it right now, you're not allowed to have a dispensary attached to your grow process. So right here, it's purely growing and processing, and then it'll be taking that product and transporting it to our dispensaries.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah.
So now, there are a number of waivers in the, being requested. They're essentially pretty standard in terms of waivers that we grant, especially down in the, in the KIPC. Things about curbing, planting beds in the parking lots, street trees. Obviously, this is a heavy industry area. Mr. Jones, any comments or questions from you regarding any of the waivers?
No, Mr. Chairman, and that is add to it that this is an existing facility that they've demolished in order to build their facility, so it's waivers that we granted from the previous owner, and again, for this owner.
Okay. All right, do you have any comments or questions regarding anything on the plan, on the project overall, in terms of concerns?
Not at this time.
Okay. All right. I know there is a letter from the fire marshal that dated October first. I don't know if you've seen that, Mr. Stoll?
I don't have it before, I mean...
Feel free, take a look at that, and if you want to show Mr. Showalter or Mr. Clapper, let them take a look. Same thing?
We've reviewed it, yes.
Okay, so they're, what complies?
Yes, but the site plan, in order to make a change, building code, I would...
Okay, all right.
Site plan...
Okay, all right, appreciate that. Got any public comment, questions? See no hands? All right, so any of the final comments, questions from...
I have none.
Okay, so Resolution nineteen dash...
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Okay, Resolution nineteen twenty-four would be granting preliminary and final land development for phase two, MLH at one fifty Roebling Road. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Good luck.
Good luck.
Item three is consider adopting an ordinance amending chapter sixty-nine, the planning commission, to amend section one, commission established and membership. Ms. Gouger?
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. The ordinance in front of the board this evening is fairly straightforward. It will reduce the composition of the planning commission from seven members down to five. This is at the request of township staff as well as the board. It's been duly advertised, and it's ready for adoption this evening.
Okay. Do you have a comment on this?
No, I think I'm...
How many do we currently have on the board? Five?
Five.
Yeah, we have had issues a little bit with a, with a membership of seven. It's been tough sometimes. If you have a few people absent, then you can't meet, you can't take action, and so sometimes if we don't have seven people on the board, we only have five, so if two people can't make it, all of a sudden, now there's no quorum. So just shrinking the number down to five allows the planning commission to do business more regularly. It's important to remember the planning commission is advisory. You know, it's different than the zoning board, which actually, you know, is more, you know, legally binding. It's a, it's a good planning commission, and certainly Mr. Brasky was on it for a long time, I was on there for a little while as well, but there's some good people on there, so this is just an idea of making it a little bit more manageable in terms of making sure we have the people on there that, that can be there and can do the job they need to do for us. Comments or questions? No hands? Okay, ordinance number nineteen dash...
Three.
Three. Okay, is there a motion then to approve ordinance nineteen dash three?
Make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item four, consider proposal for professional inspection and construction administration services from Jones Engineering and Associates for the twenty nineteen road improvement program. I'm assuming I'm going to, am I going right to Mr. Jones, or am I going to let you do, you know, have an assist on this one, Mr. Gray?
I'll give it to Mr. Jones.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have before you our proposal for construction inspection and administration services. As you'll recall, when we do our proposal for the design work, we're not sure what the construction scope will ultimately be, and so when we award the contractor, get close and see the budget numbers, then we introduce our inspection work, in case the scope would change.
Okay.
Sort of proposal you have is for, in two line items, and I'll note that the inspection service is a not-to-exceed number. So that's a little bit different from the last times that you've approved these, and that's our way of being a little bit more transparent, so that'll be just based on the time we have on the job, and so you'll see that in comparison to our inspection reports, and we pulled out our administration number so that you could see that difference and it wouldn't just be mixed together.
Okay. All right, so we're looking at construction inspection, not to exceed sixty thousand dollars, field engineering and construction administration, twenty-five thousand dollars for total fee of eighty-five thousand. And this is for three roads, a particular Fletcher Drive, Rice Drive, Lyons Drive, park portions of those. Looks like thirteen hundred fifty feet, fourteen hundred feet, three hundred and sixty feet. Mr. Gray, what was the overall budget, or Mr. Jones, what was the overall budget for the road program for this one?
Five million was the overall budget for the hedge rail wood sections. Now, this doesn't include the Burgess Drive, that, that inspection service will be in addition.
Okay, okay, all right.
I'm sorry, the Burgess Manor section.
Right. Comments or questions for Mr. Jones or Mr. Gray?
No, thanks.
No, good.
Okay, any public comment needed? See no hands? Okay, is there a motion then to authorize the expenditure of eighty-five thousand dollars according to the memo from October second from Jones Engineering and Associates for professional inspection and construction administration services for the twenty nineteen road improvement program?
So move. Second.
Mrs. Pollard?
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Rockwell?
Yes.
All right, item fives, consider the manager, consider allowing the manager to finalize the award bid for the twenty nineteen road improvement program. Mr. Gray?
The thirty-day responsible contractor's review period for the twenty nineteen road program will be completed tomorrow. In order to continue the process, the board is requested to consider allowing the township manager to finalize the award for the road program contingent upon a successful outcome of JEA's responsible contractor review.
Comments or questions?
No.
No? Mr. Jones, do you anticipate any problems between now and tomorrow?
No problems.
Okay, that's good to hear. All right, is there a motion then to authorize the manager to finalize the award bid for the twenty nineteen road improvement program?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item six, consider authorization for advertisement for the heating and air conditioning replacement project for the police department. Mr. Gray?
Yes, at this time, the board has asked to consider authorization to advertise for a new heating and air conditioning unit in the police department in the community policing area. This area houses the chief's area, the chief secretary, community policing, and some other minor offices. The unit there right now is in poor shape, it's failing, and at this time, we need a new unit to provide heating and air.
Okay.
And again, this is just authorization to advertise.
Okay. All right, comments or questions?
No.
No? Mr. Jones, do you anticipate any problems between now and tomorrow?
No problems.
Okay, that's good to hear. All right, is there a motion then to authorize the manager to finalize the award bid for the twenty nineteen road improvement program?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item six, consider authorization for advertisement for the heating and air conditioning replacement project for the police department. Mr. Gray?
Yes, at this time, the board has asked to consider authorization to advertise for a new heating and air conditioning unit in the police department in the community policing area. This area houses the chief's area, the chief secretary, community policing, and some other minor offices. The unit there right now is in poor shape, it's failing, and at this time, we need a new unit to provide heating and air.
Okay.
And again, this is just authorization to advertise.
Okay. All right, comments or questions?
Did we, did we get any pricing at all, or like any quotes, or...
We have a rough idea of how much the work would cost. I think it was over nineteen thousand dollars, and then we'd also, that's for the unit, and then you'd have to add the labor into it as well, so that would probably put it somewhere in the neighborhood of low to mid twenties.
So is it the same, so it's two different areas, but the same unit?
It's a ten ton unit, the existing unit would have to have some walls taken down to get the old unit out, and cut it up and get it out, and then the new one go back up there.
Okay.
And there'd also be a condenser put outside, on the roof above the chief's area, as well.
Is there, was, what's the primary, like, problem right now, like are they going to have heat? That we know? I'm only concerned because it's, you know, it's getting cold, I'm just kind of like, how long is this going to take, and then we want to make sure there's heat.
They're still going to have some heat.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should have got up. Really, they bypassed the heat to get it working on an emergency backup. So the gentleman didn't know how long the coil would last on emergency heat. So the unit is that bad that it's broken. So right now, they will have heat, but don't know how long that they will. It may last a week, it may last two, three hours. It's going to be on emergency heat, so it's going to be like the hair dryer, and, you know, it could go at any time.
It could go into an emergency repair before the bids even get complete then? We don't know.
Don't know. We did get a few quotes, they were around the twenty-one thousand, nineteen thousand, and that was without taking down the wall, the new electric line that has to go back, if they have to replace the electric line to feed it. So it was above the twenty thousand, and that's above the bid specs for.
Yeah, the bid threshold.
Okay. I was just concerned, you know, because of the time of year, you know what I mean, so if we, I guess the sooner we get this done tonight and get it out.
Yeah, the air conditioning part is working sporadically. It works and then it'll go warm, and then it'll go back to working. You know, when it goes warm, we call them out, they come out, they check it to see if there's a leak or something, and it's not, it's just a unit. And then, you know, we're getting charged for a service call for something that's not really broken. It's broken, but it works and then not.
I understand the threshold, but this is where it's a problem, you know?
So how long is this process?
Going to take the bid.
How long, I mean?
Thirty days.
Thirty days are standard bid?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thirty days, and I don't know with the RCO, if you've got to go another thirty days for that.
Yeah, I believe this requires the RCO as well.
Yeah.
So about sixty days out.
Yeah.
And then they got to order the equipment, schedule it.
February, you're in January, right?
Yeah, they got, yeah.
Do we have an idea, once, once they start working, how long roughly it'll take?
One gentleman told me possibly with the walls coming down and walls going back up and the spackling and all that, he told me approximately two weeks to three weeks.
But a lot of that's the spackle and drywall stuff, in terms of just getting, just getting the unit running anyway.
Well, what would happen with the unit, he said that if they were getting the job, they would order the unit now. But I couldn't give him that okay to.
Right, you can't.
Order the unit, and then he gets a unit in, and then, so I did not ask him how long the unit would take.
Is there any work with the wall and, that our Public Works can do, taking demo on that? And my second part of my question is, like, is there any specifications that could we purchase and bid labor, or quote labor, or no?
I, we didn't.
I don't know if that's legal.
Into that route, Jeff, you know, and one of the things that I was saying, when the guy said the wall had to come down, I was like, can't we just take down, like, all the ceiling tracks? That would probably be easier than taking the wall. But he was saying that where it is, you don't know how it's going to come out. The age of the building, the way that they built things around it, it could come out without taking down the wall. But it could need to take the wall down. One gentleman suggested leaving the unit in place where it is, and putting the new unit in a different area. But we ran into the same problems of, okay, we're going to put it in this area to bring everything over to it. We were right back up, might as well take it out where it's at now and do it. It would have been like the same process, by the time they ran all the trunks over to it, and the returns, and new electric lines, and it was like, well, that sounds a little more than what, just taking down the wall.
Sure, right, right. Alright, so we'll.
Looks like we'll be relocating people.
Get some spacketers.
Yeah.
Yeah, hope for the best and get it advertised and.
Yeah, I mean, the one guy had said about soul zone the whole thing apart. And I was just like, well, if that's what you want to do, you know, I'm not going to tell you how to do it. The more you save me, the better, I would appreciate it, you know, instead of taking down the walls.
Yeah. Thanks, Jack.
Thank you.
Don't know how that would work, I've never done it before.
Right. Alright, thank you.
Like, one last question, who sets the bid threshold? Do we set it at supervisor, not a state?
State, state, and it changes every year, it usually goes up by a certain percentage every year, so. This is anticipated to be over.
Alright, so again, we're considering authorization for advertisement for the heating and air conditioning replacement project for the police department. Public comment? Is there a motion to authorize the advertisement?
So move. Second.
All in favor? Alright, aye. Okay, should have just stayed up there, oh, here, here, Mr. Lawson. Consider quotes for fencing for the township property, Mr. Gray, do you want to summarize this?
Sure. Mr. Lawson secured three quotes for replacing the privacy fence along the township's property at the municipal complex in the back area near Austin Drive. Mr. Lawson is suggesting that we award the job to Landman's Fencing, Inc. for fifteen thousand six hundred dollars. This quote is three hundred seventy-five more than the lowest bid, as he is removing the entire post, and the lower bid would only flush cut the existing post. The board has asked to consider Landman Fencing for an amount of fifteen thousand six hundred dollars.
Okay. Mr. Lawson?
So the fence that borders Austin Drive along the back of our complex is an old wooden fence. It's held up by two-by-fours and stakes, and all the stuff is rotted, and we replace them. So we put in to replace it with a new vinyl fence, something that won't rot and fall over. There's seven hundred feet of fencing that we're going to be replacing from the new development next door here, all the way down to the chain link fence that is further down past Lincoln Circle. So when we got the quotes, the lowest bidder, he was just going to flush cut the post, existing post there now, and Landman was going to take the entire post out. So we figured if he was going to take them out, that, you know, it was only a couple hundred dollars more that we would go with.
Okay.
For not much more money.
Not right.
Yeah.
Comments, questions?
No, that was it, I was just, I just noticed that now, that it's only a couple hundred dollars.
Right.
So the residents back up that whole strip? This way, right?
Yeah.
Yes, this way here. Yes, there's residents all the way down. We are going with a six foot high PVC fence instead of the eight foot high. Two reasons for that, from every fencing contractor, is one is the price, and two is the wind. So once the wind kicks up, you know.
Yeah.
It would blow over easier with the eight foot, or put more strain on it with the eight foot.
What's your plan to communicate with the residents?
Once it's awarded and we have a person in place, we'll get with him, find out what date he can start, and that, then we will hand deliver letters to every resident that butts up to the property that we're replacing the fence. If there's any questions, or any concerns, or anything that falls into, when he's doing the fence, then we'll try to work with that resident to work around it. Birthday parties, pets, something.
Right.
You know, if there's a pet in the yard, and he has to take down that section of fence, then we're going to ask him to put up a temporary fence for the pet, so nothing happens.
Good, okay.
Alright, that was my question, was the neighbor's notification. Any public comment? Okay. Alright, is there a motion then to award the fencing job along the back property line of the township complex to Landman's Fencing Incorporated for fifteen thousand six hundred dollars?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Mrs. Pollan?
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Rockin?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, item number eight is consider quotes for a backflow preventer for the township building. Assuming this is.
Going in for the fire marshal?
Yes.
Alright, so first off, I guess, for people, what is a backflow preventer, and why do we need one?
So we bid the backflow preventer before. A backflow, a backflow preventer does not allow water from your system to back up into the domestic water system that we're attached to. Our, our water here at the building has a backflow preventer. Our sprinkler system is on a different tap than that system, and we do not have a backflow preventer. So for some reason, if we had a back surcharge, it would go into the domestic water, and possibly, you know, infect it.
Right, introduce pollutants or something.
Yeah, so we had gotten quotes before to put the backflow preventer on. We awarded it to someone, when they came out and they went to do the design, they couldn't do it. So we rebid it, or Richie called the companies back. All three companies came back, or two of the companies came back, the third company did not come back, and each one was about thirteen hundred dollars more for changing the design to get the backflow preventer in. Because where the sprinkler system is, in the closet with the telephone system and all that, it wouldn't, the backflow preventer wouldn't fit through that. So they redesigned it, and with the quotes that he got, they both came back about thirteen hundred dollars.
Higher than before.
Higher than before, yes.
Right.
So the DEP is now requiring, not now, they have required, but now they are really pushing that backflow preventers be tested for commercial properties, like every year, or every two years. So TOFA has now said, hey, we're getting pressure, now it's time to do it.
Sure.
And we didn't know that the fire system did not have a backflow preventer. We thought it was off of our building water, and it wasn't, it was off a separate tap. And we found that out by a letter from TOFA, saying, hey, we forgot this, you have one more tap.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so the three, there's two companies that responded to Mr. Dipolito, one did not. Thirteen thousand one hundred twenty-two dollars is the cost, and that is for DTB Sprinkler Company. So comments or questions regarding that? To Mr. Gray, or Mr. Lawson?
No. A little confusing, but I actually thought AST was.
AST was the company name, they switched their name since the last bid.
Oh, it used to be.
Yeah, so now they're DTB.
Got it, thank you.
So I know typically, if you're under the bid threshold but above the quote threshold, you're supposed to get three quotes.
You are supposed to get three quotes if you make an attempt to get three quotes, a good faith attempt, but are only able to secure less than three quotes, you can still move forward. In this instance, since this is somewhat specialized, and Mr. Dipolito reached out to three different companies and one declined to quote, we're fine.
And just to clarify, it was four. He did call someone else after Philadelphia Water did not call him back, I'm sorry, Pennsylvania Water Specialist. When they didn't call him back, he reached out to another company. And they did not respond to him either.
Okay, alright, their loss. So, okay, so comments or questions, any public comment? Alright, is there a motion then to retain the services of DTB Sprinkler Company to do the backflow preventer on the sprinkler system here in the building for the amount of thirteen thousand one hundred twenty-two dollars?
So move.
Second.
Mrs. Pollan?
Mr. Brasky?
Hi.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Rockin?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lawson, appreciate it. Alright, minutes for September seventeenth, twenty nineteen, comments or questions, corrections? If there's none, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I'll make the motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Actual minutes as always? Yes, I had to say it, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, engineers report, Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You'll see, we had one earth disturbance submission in the month of September, that's all. Notable updates on the ongoing land development project are as follows, St. Joe's project is moving along nicely, they are on target for the end of the year, in terms of being completely finished. Major work during the last few weeks has been landscaping, detention basin work, fencing, things like that. They are going to do the perimeter fencing along the frontage of the property.
I was going to ask that, yeah.
Yeah, they, it looks like they're not, because the pillars are located at the entrances, but we found out that they're going to just put smaller foundations in, so they'll core them out, it's not going to disturb the sod and landscaping that much. So that will run across. Mainly the work is now interior to the two apartment buildings. They always have some lights, so there's some things to do, but they're on target.
Those detention basins look deep, are they deep?
They are deep, and the one in the back, you probably haven't seen that one, but that one is like, is a pond, it's a permanent pond with a fountain, so it's going to be a water feature. And they do have to work on the one that you're mentioning, that has a little bit of standing water in it.
Yeah.
But they, they haven't planted the wetland plantings yet, and when they do that, then you won't see the water, it'll kind of absorb in the vegetation. But they'll probably pump it out and then do the wetland vegetation.
The pond, is it, bless you.
Yes, sir.
Did you say there's a fountain?
There's a permanent pond in the back that runs along the stream, and that's a, it's a water feature, it's going to have a fountain in it.
Yeah, will that prevent, like mosquitoes and stuff?
Yes, yep, as long as it's aerated, it won't be, it won't be a nuisance problem. And McGrath Homes, they like putting the water features in on their projects, they, most of their developments have one.
Okay, alright, cool, thanks.
Patient first is, you know, we had a little bit of an issue with it last week, they had a little bit of a mess in their stormwater basin, but since, we yelled at them, and Rich Crassell yelled at them, and they cleaned it up, and they told us that, you know, they were aware of it, and, you know, it's a very small site, it's hard for them to move around, so there were some tracks in there, but.
So they're planning an open house?
It's back in shape, and they anticipate November twenty-first, November twentieth, I think is the open house. They're on target. Air gas is back in shape in terms of their permitting, they had an issue with their foundation permits, but we've had a couple of meetings, and they're back on track. So there'll be pouring foundations out there, you'll see that in the inspection reports that come. The Outback Steakhouse, I questioned whether they were going to make their deadline for November first, and we're told that the site where contractor intends to turn it over to the owner on the twenty-eighth of this month, so they're, they're again on track. Looks like there's a little bit of work to be done out there, but we're being assured that that's going to open on November first.
Wow.
Yep, I think it's pretty aggressive myself, but. The Campy Components Project, you remember that, was approved in August, they are going to go to construction very soon. They called for pre-construction, meaning the developers' agreements in place, so that will start very soon. The Gill Composting Project was approved, recommended for approval by the Planning Commission last month, and will be before this board next month. And the Solvay Project is, has some zoning issues, they have to go to the zoning hearing board, so they may go in November, they're coming up on their deadline pretty, pretty fast. If that, if that happens, then it'll be before the PC and the Planning Commission in November, if not, it'll be December. The earth disturbance is kind of light fare, there's really no notable points to make, ongoing projects, various stages of review and construction. In terms of the township projects, we anticipate removing the docks, as usual, mid-November, weather depending. If it's nice, we'll leave them in, if it's looking bad, we'll take them out sooner. We are using IMS Innovative Marine Solutions to do the work, it's under all of the thresholds. Something that ABC Construction's been doing for us, and, you know, they've been kind of sharing the load, and IMS is the folks that built the docks, so they know them. And it looks like we're going to move forward with them to do all the work down there.
So what do they do, just put a, attach a crane and pull them out, or?
They bring a forklift down and actually float them over, you know, they'll pick the tide, you know, that makes sense, and they'll take the pins and brackets out, disconnect them from the, from the anchoring, and then float them over and forklift them up onto the site, and then chain them up. And, you know, they're, it's kind of like an assembly, and they'll be better with getting all the parts over to Public Works in a reasonable fashion, not just giving them a pile, you know, we'll keep it in order and rational, so that when they come back, they can put them back in the same way. In terms of the community park update, we did finish the drainage project, I know we reported a month ago that we were close to it, but the inlet's set, we're going to go shoot the elevation, make sure everything's okay, but we're confident that's going to drain that low point. It was a long time coming, Mr. Chairman, we apologize for the delay.
Thank you.
It's in place. And we have a plan developed for the culvert repair, I understand Mr. Dents isn't here, but, um, quick update, we're going to drop back on that and discuss when it makes sense to do that, since that's going to take that bridge out of commission, with the Mill Creek Road Bridge out of commission, we may want to coordinate the timing on those two, so maybe wait for the one to be finished. And there's no imminent need to do it, we're watching it.
Which bridge is that?
That's the culvert between Phase One and Phase Two. It's got failing pavement on both edges, we think that the ground is seeping through, maybe openings in the joints of the culvert, so essentially, the scope's going to be to take the pavement off and remove the material, seal the joints in the culvert if we find it, we see evidence of them leaking, if there's any holes, patch them up, bring back clean fill on top of it, maybe put some curbs on each four legs to help restrain subsidence, and then pave over top. So it's a big project, we're going to work with Public Works and see if they want to take it on, it may be something that we decide we want to go out to bid on, but more to come on that. The two thousand and eighteen road program is substantially complete, as you know, we're still working with Bustleton Landscape to get a good stand of grass in the grass strip. They did come out and replaced the failing sod, the sod that had died, and so that's been replaced, there's still some edge work that they have to do, and we're going to keep riding that until we get good grass. We have a fair amount of retainage we're holding, and they're not going to get it until we get some watering and some good grass. And the nineteen road program, that's the remaining scope in Hedgerow Woods, and the Burgess Manor, that continues to move forward. We're probably going to have our first residents meeting for the remaining portion of Hedgerow Woods in November, and then for Burgess Manor folks in December or January, probably December. And one other point on that, there was some correspondence between the residents on Rice Drive and Pico, there's been a lot of residents inquiring about getting gas service, so we've been in contact with Pico, Mike Gabriel is our contact, and they're working on whether they can pair up with us. So we're going to ask the contractor, when we give them the notice, to proceed to delay Rice Drive and work on Fletcher and Lions until we can resolve that, but it may be that the residents on Rice Drive get their gas service, that'd be, that'd be great.
Alright, comments or questions, Mr. Jones?
No, thanks.
Uh, none, thanks.
Any public comment, questions? Alright, thank you, Mr. Jones, appreciate the report, lots of good news. Motion to accept the engineer's report, which is dated September twenty nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, bill list this month, billed the amount of one million nine hundred and one thousand, one hundred eighty-three dollars thirty-one cents. So of that one point nine million, about one point, almost one point four million is salary and various insurance, as well as a new police vehicle. There's an additional two hundred, in fact, two hundred thousand dollars, which covers workman's compensation, things like gasoline for the township vehicles, as well as funds that are not. that are not township funds, the Highway Aid Fund, Crime Prevention Fund, which are state funds, and the escrow amount, which is money the developers put up. So about one point five, almost one point six of the one point nine million is just those, those few things. Comments or questions regarding the bill list for Mr. Gray?
None for me.
I have none.
None? Okay, is there a motion to pay the bills, one million, nine hundred, one thousand, one hundred eighty-three thou, eighty-three dollars, thirty-one cents?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Pollan?
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Rocko?
Yes.
Okay, executive session we had before our meeting, chief's report. Chief?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, professional staff, good evening. I have several items for you this evening. First of all, the Chief of the Day Program for nineteen, for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty will begin in November, we're gonna start at the Eleanor Roosevelt School and then we'll proceed through the other elementary schools. Our Citizen Police Academy is in full operation right now, we have twenty-seven people participating. According to Officer Jaeger, it's going, it's been very successful. And to anybody tonight that may be watching this, I just want to advise the public, when this opportunity comes up again, please take advantage of it. It's a great tool, it's, it's a great PR tool that shows how our police department works and it shows how police operate in general. It's a, it's a very, very good instrument that we utilize here. Coffee with a Cop is scheduled for November fourteenth at the Citizens Senior Center. I want, I want to invite any member of the board to come in and sit on it, it's, we have, it works very, very good. Subsequently, the following week, the Police Association will have their annual Thanksgiving lunch for all the seniors. I think Mr. Dents attended it last year, I'm, would invite the board to attend that also. Our accreditation right now looks like it's gonna be scheduled in between the fifth and the twelfth, I don't have a definitive date yet here. But based on our mock accreditation, and it went very well, and we adjusted some of the items based on their recommendation and with the due diligence of our accreditation team, I fully expect for us to have accreditation maybe by the next meeting. Finally, we just received the check for three thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-five cents reimbursement for overtime that we were just working with the Drug Task Force with the District Attorney's Office, I want to make the board aware of that. That's what, that's all I have this evening.
Okay, thank you. Questions for the chief?
No.
No, I have none, chief, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I do, I'm sorry. For the accreditation, will you know when they leave that day?
Yes.
They'll let you know?
We should.
You should, yeah.
We should.
Okay, let us...
That's been, that's been the normal procedure.
Okay.
And I'll make sure that I send out an email right away to everybody.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Thank you, chief, appreciate it. Okay, manage your comment, Mr. Gray?
Yes, just a few items tonight. First one is in regard to escrow releases, there's two for board consideration. First one is for Abington Reldan Metals, Phases Two, Three, and Four. They are, they are located at five fifty Old Borden Town Road. The escrow release amount is one hundred and eight thousand, two hundred, fifty-three dollars, sixty-four cents. This is letter of credit release number two. The second escrow release is for St. Joe's Court, located on New Falls Road. Escrow release amount is one hundred, twenty-one thousand, nine hundred, twenty-six dollars, ninety-six cents. This is also a letter of credit, this is release number ten. Based on Jones Engineering Associates' inspection of each project, the work has been completed to their satisfaction and the amounts are recommended for release by JEA.
Okay, comments or questions regarding the escrow releases?
No.
No?
Mr. Jones, as far as St. Joseph's Court, what percentage are they at this point? Do they do it like that?
In terms of the overall construction, it really doesn't match up with the numbers, Mr. Brasky?
That's what I was asking, it seems like they're leaving a lot on the table.
There's no correlation, yeah, a lot of the money that's left in the escrow is, is retainage and contingency.
Okay.
And there's other, you know, they always have some lights, as I said, and some fencing and some other improvements, so...
Yeah, 'cause I mean, it really looks good, you know, and, and I see they're moving out sod is planted.
Yep.
And, but I see the escrow, remaining escrow and it just seems...
Yep, and don't forget they have to do the wearing course, so that'll be a big number.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, alright, is there a motion then to release the two escrow, approve the two escrow releases outlined in the October ninth, twenty nineteen memo, one, one for Abington Reldan, one for St. Joseph's Court?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Pollan?
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Rocko?
Yes.
Just wanted to announce two new businesses that were approved to open operations in Falls Township during the month of September. They include Music Together, located at eighty-five Makefield Road, Suite fourteen in Morrisville, and Fairless Hills Psychic, located at three twenty-three Lincoln Highway, Suite One in Fairless Hills. Just a few other announcements to make. The twenty nineteen Bulk Disposal Day will be held on Saturday, October twelfth between the hours of seven AM and eleven AM. This is for resident homeowners of Falls Township and Toy Town Borough. Proof of residency is required, is not intended for commercial customers or contractors. Drop-off location is Groves Landfill behind Waste Management's Turkey Hill Office at one thousand New Ford Mill Road. Residents can drop off bulky waste items, yard waste, and appliances. For additional information, please call one eight hundred, eight six nine, five five six six. The twenty nineteen Falls Township Leaf Collection Schedule will be held on the following dates, Saturday, October twenty-sixth, Saturday, November ninth, and Saturday, November twenty-third. Waste Management will not pick up leaf collection trash in October until the first collection date, which is October twenty-sixth, until the last collection date of November twenty-third. After the last collection date, please place in your regular trash. Leaves must be bagged in thirty-gallon biodegradable paper bags or placed in thirty-gallon trash containers without lids. They are to be placed curbside by six AM on collection days in the same location as your regular trash pickup. Leaves in any other conditions will not be, actually, I'm sorry, leaves in any other containers will not be collected. Falls Township Police will hold its Great Shredder Event on Saturday, October twenty-sixth, from nine AM to one PM in the front parking lot of the Police Department. This is a free event, shred your old documents, which include six bags or boxes, limit one per person. This is open to Falls Township residents only and no businesses are allowed. Also, at the Falls Township Police Department, also on October twenty-sixth, between ten AM and two PM, turn in your unused or expired medication for safe disposal. And...
Two additional items this evening. The first is a resolution which will designate Mr. Gray as the Open Records Officer for Administrative Matters, continues to designate Lieutenant Todd Plitnick for Open Records Officer for Police Matters.
Okay, comments or questions?
No, I think last, last meeting we appointed Petey Rukoff.
We did.
Yeah.
Nineteen twenty-five, resolution?
Nineteen twenty-five, that's correct.
Okay. Alright, is there a motion to authorize resolution nineteen twenty-five or approve resolution nineteen twenty-five?
I'll make that motion.
One second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And finally, this evening, as the board is aware, the township extended an offer to Matthew Tekeeta to serve as the Township's Assistant Manager, Zoning Officer, and Director of Building, Planning, Code Enforcement, and Zoning for the Township. We have prepared an agreement for Mr. Tekeeta's employment effective tomorrow through the end of this year, December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. Mr. Tekeeta has reviewed and executed the agreement, so it would just be the Township's consideration to approve the agreement with Mr. Tekeeta.
Okay. Mr. Tekeeta does come to us by way of Ben Salem, where he worked for, was it twenty-six years?
Twenty-six.
In basically this, almost the same capacity, was an assistant manager or deputy manager, but he did operate in zoning and code enforcement and also has background in architecture, so comes very, very highly recommended. Comments or questions regarding this agreement?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the employment agreement for Matthew Tekeeta?
Make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Harvey, before the board votes on that agreement, would, would it be appropriate to take public comment?
Oh, is there a public comment? No, okay. Is there, I was waiting, a motion in a second, right?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Okay.
That's all I have, thank you.
Alright. Alright, board comment, Mr. Rocko?
Um, no, nothing tonight, thank you.
Nothing for you? Okay. Mr. Brasky?
Um, just real quick, one thing, I wanted to just thank Mr. Lawson and Mr. Jones, we, the two guys helped me out on Mill Creek Road. We, anybody that drives that road knows going into North Park, everything's paved and there's turn lanes except for going into New Pond, there was no deceleration lane and no left turn lane, so a couple of residents had reached out and expressed some concerns and I know we got taken care of and those same residents have, you know, called and emailed me and then, and I, and I went out there myself, so it looks good, I appreciate them. Thank you.
Okay, alright, okay. A couple of things, I know Mr. Jones mentioned the docks earlier to be coming out, I was talking with Mr. Gray today about the revenue the township brings in from the docks, because we do charge people a daily rate if they're gonna put their boats in, and there's also a yearly seasonal pass they can get. We did sort of make a change this year, which was to go, you can come here, as you always could, to get a pass or to get a daily rate if you wanted to, or daily ticket, or you could do it over your phone. There was a kiosk down there, but that's always been sort of very problematic and it's been very spotty in terms of how well it works. And so in terms of having people just enter into their phone and they get a pass, which is registered, sort of online, and then they can use the boat ramp, but we did bring in, was it, was it over, just a...
Twenty-two thousand.
Yeah, twenty-two thousand dollars this year, which is actually more than we've raised and more than we've brought in in past years. And so, yeah, it's been, it's actually the most we've ever brought in...
Yes.
...in the course of a year, it's twenty-two thousand dollars.
We think that's because of convenience of the phone app, doing it on the phone or?
I think that phone app helped out a lot, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so we talked a little bit about, was talking to Mr. Gray earlier about just not really even doing the kiosk anymore, just going strictly by phone.
Right.
Because the report of who gets a pass, a daily pass, can be sent or is recorded here at the township, can be sent to a police department. If a police officer's driving around that area, they can make sure that the license plates that are there match up with people who have gotten the pass, so it's a pretty easy way to do that. I did have, I've had a couple of people actually ask about whether or not we're gonna do another e-waste recycling event, because we did one in, I guess it was January or February?
January.
January, which was in like way, way more than I think, than we thought it was gonna be. And the company that did it was a company, I think, from Allentown?
Allentown.
That said that they had never seen, they'd never done a project, had never done a collection as big as this one, and that they, they actually wanted to come back like the following week or something, crazy, because they just, they, they wanted to come back here and do it again. It just, the problem is they need a, a big paved area and they need it for days and days ahead of time. The only big paved area that's available for days and days ahead of time is, you know, really the, the park, you know, parking lot in the wintertime when no one's using it. We talked, we thought originally about just using one of the school lots, but, you know, except in the summertime, I guess, but even in the summertime, sometimes the lots are used, so it just wouldn't make sense. So I think we should definitely take a look at doing that again, because we thought originally that, well, when they said they wanted to come back a week or two or a month later, that, well, everybody just came to your event, no one's gonna have anymore, and they said, oh, no, no, if this many people came out to this event and, you know, the first time you've done it, there's a lot of people underserved in this area in terms of, you know, being able to, to, you know, take those devices to places where they're gonna get properly So that's something we should definitely take a look at. Do you want to mention, I think it's sort of like, kind of resisted, was gonna resist mentioning anything about this, but I think it's sort of necessary just to defend the people of this township. So there have been different advertisements, printed on TV regarding trash in Bucks County, in, in Falls Township rather. Just for clarification, for those that have seen any of that, Waste Management has never transported trash on the river, ever, in the roughly thirty-five, forty years they've operated landfills. None of the landfills take hazardous waste or radioactive waste, they never have, and so that information's all completely inaccurate, which is not a complete surprise, I guess. Somebody must be scared. So, so just to clarify, you know, some of that, if you happen to see that. So a couple of the things, we will not meet obviously before Halloween, so we'll make sure everybody's being safe for Halloween in terms of, you know, driving around the, you know, the streets. Hopefully we have good weather for the trick-or-treaters and it's always, you know, certain people really, really get into Halloween, you see more and more decorations every year, they'll blow up things on people's front lawns and the, the different kind of decorations they put out. And so hopefully we'll have good weather and people can be safe as they're walking around the streets at night with their kids, make sure drivers are cautious of that and careful. Veterans Day, we'll meet, our next meeting's gonna be after Veterans Day, so I want to wish a big thank you to all the people who have served this country, whether it was in wartime or peace, at home or abroad. Mr. Galloway is our veteran here on this board, he's again ill this evening, so we'll wish him a happy Veterans Day in advance and to all the other veterans out there, especially, you know, give them a thank you as, if you see them on the streets and you know that